To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Most.
Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Counselor Paul.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Janik.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Burke.
Present.
Counselors DiMedeiris and Milburn are absent.
So our first order of business is consideration and vote on a proclamation about Emergency Medical Services Week being May nineteenth to the twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-four. I'll read the proclamation. EMS Week proclamation to designate the week of May nineteen to twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-four as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the Tiverton Town Council, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteen to twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The fiftieth anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week: Honoring Our Past, Forging Our Future. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Chief, would you like to say anything about it before we?
There's been a police report. We saw numerous examples of saves that we had this past year. So, I mean, EMS, they do a great job, including the police, so I would wholeheartedly endorse that.
Great, thank you. Entertained a motion for unanimous consent?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made second, and all those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of Town Council minutes, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, special meeting. Counselors Edwards, Edwards the Fifth, and Milburn abstain, absent, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, special meeting. Counselor Edwards the Fifth, absent, abstains, absent, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-fourth, executive session. Counselors Edwards the Fifth and Milburn abstain, absent, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting. Counselor Milburn abstains, absent, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, executive session. Counselor Milburn abstains, absent. I do want to note those that Counselor Edwards the Fifth, he was away in another country, so it was going to be hard for him to be here on a planned vacation.
And they don't let me zoom in anymore, so.
B, acknowledge receipt of minutes from boards, commissions, committees, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, one. C, acknowledge receipt of reports, Town Administrator Department's monthly reports, April two thousand and twenty-four. Two, Town Administrator, Police, and Fire Department overtime reports, April two thousand and twenty-four. D, acknowledge receipt of correspondence. One, Town of Bristol, resolution in support of safety barriers on bridges over near Gansett Bay. Two, Town of Boroughville, resolution opposing House Bill eight-one-zero-nine, legislation relating to taxation, statewide tangible property tax exempt. Three, Town of Barrington, resolution in support of safety barriers on bridges over near Gansett Bay. Four, Town of Exeter, resolution in opposition to H seven-nine-three, seven-nine-eight-three. Five, Town of Exeter, resolution opposing any revival of the old Saybrook to Kenyon pass, bypass. Six, Town of Exeter, resolution in support of fully funding state aid to libraries to the full twenty-five percent level. Seven, Town of Exeter, resolution in opposition to House Bill seven-seven-six-three and Senate Bill two-six-seven-nine relating to public records. And eight, letter from Chris Clarendon-Re, proposed amendments to Town Ordinances, Chapter fifty-four, Section fifty-four dash thirty-two, Chapter seventy-eight, Section seventy-eight dash seventy-two, which are the regulations regarding parking at the beaches. Does anyone wish to remove anything? Counselor Edwards?
Four D two.
Four D two. Anyone else? And I will remove D four just for explanation.
Counselor Janik as well.
D four, you said?
Four D four.
And I'd like to remove four D seven.
Four D seven. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor? So Counselor Edwards the Fifth, Town of Boroughville, D two.
Yeah, so we had a quick discussion, Counselor Janik and I, before the start of this meeting. I just went back and reread the legislation, and I think it would be wise for us to draft companion resolution in opposition to this bill, because it does not give clarity to, you know, how or where additional dollars that we have been receiving for tangible property are going to come from. My guess is that the state is preparing to stop giving us dollars for eliminating things like the automobile tax. And with that, if it would please the lawyer, also House Bill eighty-two sixty-five and eighty-two sixty-six, resolutions in support of there.
Eighty-two sixty-five and sixty-six?
Yes.
Support.
So you will come back to us next meeting? Okay, thank you. Four D four, I just wanted to make note what it's about. It's a resolution in opposition to House Bill seven-nine-eight-three. House Bill seven-nine-eight-three creates the office of the State Building Commissioner and allows that office to enforce all laws of the state, including but not limited to conducting and supervising building code inspections of all residential and commercial buildings regulated by the code within the state, and standardize building code interpretation in the concern of the Exeter Town Councils that it will supersede the rights of cities and towns around building code execution and enforcement. And Counselor Janik, D seven?
Four D seven, and this is about public access, which I do fully support. However, they're talking about within thirty days of receipt by the public body, and it's a really long list of documents, papers, letters, maps, books, tapes, photographs, films, sound recordings, magnetic or other tapes, electronic data processing records, computer stored data, including electronic mail messages, except specifically for any electronic mail messages of or to elected officials with or relating to those they represent in correspondence of or to elected officials in their official capacities, or other material regardless of physical form or characteristics made or received, pursuant to law or ordinance, or in connection with the transaction of official business by any agency. And it just seems like it's a lot of materials over a short period of time, and I feel that it would be challenging to collect and to store and deposit all of these materials.
Would you like us to draft?
I would like to support a draft to oppose this also.
Could you also add that to your drafting? I was, we could, if we want.
I would have liked to.
Okay. Four D four as well, the State Building Commissioner.
Guys, you're in the opposition room tonight.
We are.
We're just looking to keep you busy, Mike, that's all.
Without further ado, could I have a motion to accept items four D two, four D four, and four D seven?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor? Okay. Moving on to public comments. Do I have any public comments? Anybody from the public wish to comment on anything? Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing no one, we'll move on to our Board of Licensing, discussion of possible votes. Tiverton Recreation LLC requesting special event permit for a touch truck event on Sunday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from ten a.m. to one p.m. at Longplex Family and Sports Center, three hundred Industrial Way. Mr. Riley, I believe you're here for Tiverton Recreation.
Correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'll keep my comments brief and am prepared to answer any questions the council may have. This application is for a touch truck event on Father's Day, June sixteenth. The plan is to have approximately forty or so, mostly commercial construction tow truck-type vehicles there. Admission is free. It's just a general get-together type event. There's no amplified sound or concessions or anything like that of that sort. This is outside the building, and there are no special events scheduled for that time. This was, this day was picked because there was essentially nothing else going on that day, and this is the start of the slower season since the weather's nice and people want to be outside and not in.
So no tournaments or anything?
There are no tournaments that day, no.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Riley?
This has been done before, hasn't it?
It has, yes. Done of the exact dates, but it has been done with, sometimes there have been fire apparatus, police vehicles, and this is different from the car events, the coffees and car events. This has been done, this has been organized and sanctioned by Longplex before, just like it is this time.
I think that it might have actually been the Safety Day.
Yeah.
With the, right, the police and fire ambulances.
Correct.
So same type setup?
Yeah, I believe the town departments haven't invited, but I believe at this point the plan is for the majority of the vehicles are construction companies and private sector participants.
That answers my question if you'd reached out to the fire department yet. So Chief, send a truck down.
Yes, sir.
No, we can't?
You can't do that.
Okay. I see, because we're not, I got you. Never mind. Chief, I'm not telling you what to do, but it would be, it would be nice if you talked to Mr. Riley.
They are, and they have the permit application, so they're well aware of it, and as are the police department.
So I have one question. Was this already advertised?
I am, I'm not sure. It could be. I'm not sure what the schedule was.
So my concern is similar to when we were at the high school. There was an event that was advertised before we even had a chance to look at it. So I'd hope that it, this was not, and that any such event in the future, it comes before the council before any advertising gets done.
Yeah, we're certainly trying to get the event permits put in far enough in advance so that it predates the need to advertise, understanding that we have to get ahead of these things. I will say, the previous meeting, that was the first meeting since we had a decision in the court matter.
Right.
And before that, there was an inclination of the council not to entertain the applications at all. So we really were between a rock and a hard place, and I understand the council wasn't pleased that advertising was being done or that there were conversations about it. There was really nothing we could do in that instance.
Thank you. And just to know, I will be voting in favor only because of the Superior Court decision. I do think that this falls outside of what the facility was originally designed for, but. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair. Make a motion that we approve the special event permit for the touch truck event on Sunday, June sixteenth, from ten a.m. to one p.m. at the Longplex Family and Sports Center, three hundred Industrial Way.
A second. Have a second, motion in second, and any further discussion? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Appointments and resignations. We heard from Mr. Clark and Mr. Reposa, so I'll just go through this planning board. Nine-member board, three-year terms, one vacancy for a term ending seven fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five. Our applicants were Stephen Clark of thirty-one Peaceful Way and Adam Reposa of thirty-one Carpenter Street. These were both considered new appointments. I see Mr. Clark is here, I don't see Mr. Reposa, but they did not have to attend tonight. Do I have any motion on this?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we nominate Stephen Clark, thirty-one Peaceful Way, to the planning board with an appointment to end seven fifteen, twenty-five.
Second.
Have a motion in second, discussion?
So this is probably one of the more difficult decisions, because I think they're both exceptional candidates, and quite frankly, I didn't make a motion because I wanted to kind of see what everybody else thought. So I'm happy that, you know, the motion is for Mr. Clark. You know, I also would have been happy if the motion was for Mr. Reposa. So I want to thank both of them for putting their names forward and, you know, encourage, again, if the vote goes for Mr. Clark, that Mr. Reposa still continue to stay involved, because I think he did a, he would be a good valuable member for the board.
Counselor Janik?
I'd just like to comment that Mr. Clark has attended Planning and Zoning Board meetings for many, many months, because he and I have sat together through many, many hours of planning and zoning. So I feel that he's really up to speed on everything that's going on, and there is a multitude of information that is being talked about and being presented through those boards. I am very comfortable with that nomination.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Clark to the one-year term ending seven fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five on the planning board? None opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, congratulations.
Moving on to the semi-quintcentennial commission. I'm glad it was in writing in front of me. Nine-member board, two vacancies, terms ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six. Christine Costa is our applicant, eleven seventy-three Main Road, requests appointment. And I will note to those who have been already appointed to this that I will be organizing an initial meeting sometime in the near future, just have not had a chance to do that. Christine?
Yes.
Come on up, please. Yeah, either way, stand or sit.
Outcast.
Whichever you prefer. Can you just tell us a little bit about why you're interested in this, other than what's on your resume?
Sure. Those of you that don't know me, my name is Christine Costa. I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Tiverton Middle School. I've been teaching for thirty-one years at the middle school for twenty-seven. My focus is American history, and I have a great love for the Declaration of Independence. I am the two thousand and twenty-three Rhode Island History Teacher of the Year, and I wanted to use my knowledge and work that I do with civics and the I Civics Organization and my work with Rhode Island Historical Society to connect with Tiverton and how we will celebrate the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Costa?
Just one. In your thirty-one years of teaching, who was your favorite student?
On video, I'm definitely going to say John.
Was he good in history?
Of course, he didn't ask who was the best student.
That's correct.
His whole family would make the list. There is a definite reason why I stay teaching in Tiverton, and it's for the families that are here, so.
No, thank you. And are you doing online at Gettysburg, I assume?
I am doing a master's in American history online through Gettysburg College, yes.
Have you been able to get there?
Excuse me?
Have you been there?
Yes, I have.
Oh, good.
Absolutely.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we waive our policy and appoint this evening and appoint Christine Costa, eleven seventy-three Main Road, to the semi-quintcentennial commission for a term ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second. Second.
Several seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe we move this one to tonight, because there are three vacancies. Mr. Malinsky, are you here? He doesn't have to be here, but.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Mr. Malinsky isn't able to travel at night.
Oh, okay.
We discussed this at the last meeting.
Oh, thank you. I didn't hear that last time.
He did write that in his citation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Given the fact that Mr. Malinsky will be unable to, likely unable to attend any of our evening meetings, I'd like to make a motion that we waive our policy and appoint Mr. Malinsky to the tree commission for a term ending four fifteen, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Second.
It's a reappointment.
Reappointment, my apologies. So no waiving of the policy needed.
We have a motion in a second. All those, any discussion?
All right, then the waiver is included.
There is a waiver, because I'm looking at new rules. It may waive interviews for reappointments if the number of applicants do not exceed available positions. The chair of the board of commissioners sends a favorable letter of recommendation in support of the members seeking reappointment, or if other special circumstances. So I think the special circumstances.
Perfect.
Motion in a second, and I would say that we need to get two other people, so he has, well, at least one other person, so he has a quorum. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passed. Thank you. And next, Tax Assessment Board of Review, three-member board, three-year terms, one vacancy, term ending ten fifteen, two thousand and twenty-six. We have one applicant for that vacancy, Judith Jones, seventeen forty-nine Main Road, requests appointment. Would you come up, Judith? Can you just talk about why you're interested?
Well, I was on it before, and then I took a break, but I've been a real estate appraiser for over thirty-five years and a broker, and I'm certified general and designated. And I think I'd be an asset, because I'm very familiar with, with properties and what their values are, so.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
And you were on the Budget Committee, too.
I was, but I didn't, I didn't, the Budget Committee, I didn't think we were able to accomplish much of anything. So that's why I quit, and I'm happy to be back on the, on the Tax Review Board.
I just want to point out that we had a, there was a couple of pending applications where one of the members had to recuse themselves, so we're down to one member, and we actually had a right to the state to get an extension on pending appeals. So that's why I asked Dave Roberts if he knew anybody and he recommended Ms. Jones. So this would be, this would help us move the appeal process along, basically, because we were, we're under a timeline.
Dave's in the back of the room giving thumbs up.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we waive our policy and appoint Judy Jones to the Tax Assessment Board of Review for a, where are we at? Term ending ten fifteen, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
And last, on appointments, Recreation Commission, seven-member commission, three-year terms, one vacancy. Chris Roemline, that's misspelled, it should be R-O-E-M, of seventy-three High Hill Road, requests reappointment, term ending four fifteen, two thousand and twenty-seven. Chris is not here, it's a reappointment, however, and I can't speak directly for Stu, but I know that having been the liaison to that commission for my whole time on the council, he certainly puts in a lot of effort, both at meetings and in-between meetings, and especially down in the fogland area. So I think I would ask that we move forward if someone makes a motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we reappoint Chris Roemline for, to the Recreation Commission for a term ending four fifteen, two thousand and twenty-seven, and add that Mr. Roemline was Stu before Stu was Stu on the Rec Commission.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Passed. Next, we're onto general business. Rhode Island Energy requests for a potential amendment to the zoning code to facilitate the open storage of utility poles for an upgrade to area electric transmission lines. This is only for, on the, on for discussion at this point, and I assume you are Mr. Watson? Nope?
No, not, not Mr. Watson.
But the jacket says Rhode Island Energy, so we've got the right guy.
Correct, yes. My parents wish I was a lawyer or something, I don't know. But may I start?
Yeah, if you could introduce yourself.
Sure, no problem. Jacques Afonso from Rhode Island Energy, and on behalf of Rhode Island Energy, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. And in my role, I am an External Affairs Manager. I am the liaison account manager for Rhode Island Energy and the municipality of Tiverton. Actually, Tiverton, Little Compton, Quinick Island, East Bay, that is, I pretty much manage those accounts, those municipalities. So we are in the final stages of developing an electric transmission replacement project. This is the existing line that runs and, that runs from the Massachusetts State Line across at the Secana, it feeds a Quinick Island and also feeds the Tiverton substation. We are looking to replace the, that existing line from Portsmouth, Freeborn Street. We have an existing substation there, so the line from there going north, parallel to twenty-four, through the golf course, crossing the Secana, and then as it goes into Tiverton, it takes a left on Evans, if I'm not mistaken, goes through the right-of-way up to the State Line, then it actually comes back in and it feeds the, actually, it goes, it comes back in and it goes in parallel to Route twenty-four, and it feeds the Tiverton substation, which feeds all of Tiverton and Little Compton. So that is a project that we're in the final stages of developing. If things go well, it's a project that we're looking to hopefully start construction sometime in this fall of two thousand and twenty-four. Construction should last approximately a year, up to next summer of two thousand and twenty-five, give or take. And then in two thousand and twenty-six, we should be able to finalize any restoration that's needed for the right-of-ways and access points and so forth. So at the final, as part of the final stages of developing, we are looking for a laydown area as close to the project as possible, and as our real estate department was doing its due diligence to find the location, we did find one at the corner of Main and Souza Road. I think the address is zero, I don't know the exact address, but it's, it's an eight-acre parcel there.
We have a map.
Oh, you have the map? I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
People who are unaware, it's a parcel that surrounds where the Stevens proposal is.
That's where they're used, they're.
Gas tanks?
Yeah, there used to be the gas tanks up there? Yeah.
I believe so. So, so that is a parcel, and part of our due diligence reached out to the building official, which the building official had responded that for us using that as a laydown area wasn't allowed per, and I don't know the proper term, the city zone or ordinance or whatever it may be. So with that, we were able to meet with the town administrator and the town solicitor, DPW director, and the building official to explain the project a little bit more. We did propose some amendment to the wording of the ordinance, so we're just looking for hopefully acceptance approval. I don't know if that's done here tonight, or if it's just introducing that.
This is just an introduction.
Okay, okay. So I'm sorry?
That's right.
So we're just looking to introduce that, get feedback, and hopefully keep the momentum and moving in that direction that we'd be able to utilize that property for the project. And if you have any questions on that project or the site that, on the corner of Main and Souza Road, hopefully I can answer your questions.
So just for some background, Council President, the Rhode Island Energy did approach the building official for a potential zoning certificate. We weren't able to issue that zoning certificate because open lot storage of, under Article Four, Section fifteen, it says open lot storage of junk, scrap, salvage materials, construction equipment, and/or materials not associated with a wholesale business is not allowed in Tiverton. If you have something in front of you that I gave you, this is an empty lot, so there's no business associated with it whatsoever. So because of that, they were, they were not able to proceed. We then met with, I think it was last week, we met with Jacques and the lawyer for Rhode Island Energy with the town administrator, I believe Rick was with us, and myself. And what they are proposing is basically a limited exception amendment to our zoning code that would allow for utilities, public utilities, not generally, you know, but public utilities only which would include Rhode Island Energy, the Old National Grid, I don't know whether, kind of, maybe, you know, tell Verizon, sewer gas, whatever, to allow this kind of open lot storage on, you know, on lots, but tied to a particular project. So they proposed some language. I don't think the language is quite there, but it is at least a starting point, and we didn't want to waste the council's time nor Rhode Island Energy's time, because the council was not even interested in entertaining such a proposal, because if we do write a zoning ordinance, it will go to the planning board for their recommendation, only a recommendation, the ultimate decision is up to you, and then.
Public.
Back to us, after a public hearing, back to us. We did feel, again, talking with the town administrator, I don't want to speak for him, because this is a public utility project, and it would benefit by upgrading the line to town, would benefit that, we wanted to bring it back to you to see if they would have any interest, or if not. I guess they would look for another site, but. And again, this is not specific to this site, it's, again, it would allow.
Right. So what made you choose this site?
The, so full disclosure, we did have another project, there was what was called the Quinick Island Reliability Project that was completed about three years ago, started seven years ago. We did look for that site, it was originally in Westport, that site was not available. This site here, again, in being able to find it, the, it's already a fairly cleared lot, we wouldn't have to do any clearing, it's right next to where we're going to be actually the existing transmission lines, we're going to be doing a lot of the replacements, and right near twenty-four. It was just one of those perfect locations that just, again, met all, checked off a lot of the boxes that we needed for a laydown area, close proximity to the project area, that, again, that would hopefully get us in and out as quickly as possible to complete the project.
And this would just be for poles?
It would be for the towers, two high embed flatbeds, either a crane or a front loader for the equipment, but it would be storage for all the, the new equipment, the new poles that would be installed in the transmission right-of-ways, and again, that equipment that I just mentioned now. And also some cables and wires and so forth that would be installed.
I assume you may know that this is a fairly controversial area of town right now.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
But, that said, it also would open us up to any, is this suggesting in any commercial area, is that what it is? The amendment?
Particularly hang zones, but it has to be, yeah. Right now it's prohibited, except, except where it's an open lot storage for the associated business, so, yeah.
Questions? Go ahead, Deb first, and then you.
So this is temporary storage while the project is ongoing?
Correct.
Would we put timelines on when that would have to be?
They have proposed 36 consecutive months, they have proposed 36 consecutive months. I think Jacque just indicated that maybe it's two years to expect the project to be done, so that's one of, that's one of the things that we might have some wriggle room to try to, you know, limit it a little bit, but it would be temporary.
But then that, that project's done, and then Verizon comes in and wants to do something, they can use that same lot?
They could use the same lot or any lot where they were, any lot within the town.
It's more than just that lot?
But they would still need approval, right, exactly. If there's a cur cut, they would, you know, they would go through the general process.
I've, I've got a couple of issues with the wording, so I think at this point, I would make a motion that we refer this to the Planning Board for review and recommendations.
So I don't think we have anything specific to refer to the Planning Board? I think, if we want it, no, because that's not in final form.
Yeah, this is only discussion, I mean, this is only discussion, so.
Right, and we can't take a vote tonight, anyway.
Should accept you have any language, changes or whatever, we can talk about them now, and then we can draft the ordinance with the, if, if you're interested in even going forward with this, then I would meet with their lawyer, grab some language, and then bring it back to you, and then refer it to the Planning Board. This is, but that's only if you guys are interested.
So, a question for you, Mr. Afonso. Mentioned this specific site, do you guys already have anything in place? Because obviously you're not the owners of the site, right?
The, the only thing we have in place is just conversations with originally the Realtor, the Realtor for that property and then the property owner himself. That's the only, only, only thing we've had, is conversations.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I, I think it makes sense to, you know, have our attorney meet with their attorney, finalize the language and, you know, then kick it off to the Planning Board. This particular parcel, I know we've had a ton of development, but if for some reason it's going to be locked up under contract for 36 months, that means that they're not going to be breaking ground and sticking 180 condos in there, so, wouldn't be the worst thing in the world.
Is there a way to get them what they need by not amending the zoning, but if they find other properties that could be used, or even this property, just giving some type of temporary approval or not?
Well, that's one of the things we thought about, having some temporary approval, but there's nothing in our zoning ordinance that allows such temporary approval. This is kind of a way of doing it. I mean, it's, it is, you know, this would be limited, they've proposed 36 consecutive months, we could probably cut it down from that. Right now the zoning code only allows this when it's associated with a business, and there's no business on this lot, and I don't know, and there are not very few, as you know, there are very general, very few general commercial lots within the town, or even in, you know, that, that could support this, or in industrial park, but the industrial park is not, I guess not close enough for them. So, we have very limited areas, so this is, this is a, I'm assuming this is own residential, but I could be wrong. Is it residential, yeah? But again, it's limited, the way.
The whole space is own residential?
I believe this lot is.
So the, you know, the, the language that is quoted by them comes from the city of Warwick, and it's not uncommon for cities and towns because of the public benefit of allowing utilities to upgrade their systems to allow these kind of temporary storage places. We just don't have that in our own ordinance.
No, I, and I get that, I'm just concerned about creating a, an ordinance that opens it up more broadly than A, particular parcel, B, I'm concerned about this parcel, and just wondering if there's any way we can do it without changing zoning and just, but not, there's not.
I don't think so.
We wouldn't change the zoning.
We're not changing the underlying zone, we're just, we're just allowing this.
For temporary use.
It's a temporary use.
Okay, okay.
So we're not, we're not changing the underlying zone, we're just allowing open stock, open storage of projects associated with, of private utility, public utility, sorry.
So it's almost.
It could be anywhere in town.
Could be, right, right. But it's not, it's not changing the underlying zone.
No, no, I realize that.
So if you.
No matter where it is.
Let's say here disagreement, if the solicitor can come back with some language that we can look at and work with and have the Planning Board look at.
Just before we, and that's fine, but if you, and you can just contact me individually if you want, if you have particularly concerns that you want to address. I know that Council Edwards, 36 consecutive was a little long, and the 90-day cleanup was a little concerning, so if anybody has anything like that.
I have one quick question. Would this even be a discussion point if Rhode Island Energy owned the lot?
Yes, because there's no, there's no building that owns the lot.
You guys should buy it. Solved all of our problems in one fell swoop.
No, they still wouldn't be able to.
Because it's, it's still a building.
No, I understand, but that makes it a little bit easier to designate a specific area.
Not, not associated with a wholesale business.
They wholesale electricity.
I'm sure there would be an outcry if I were a rendered opinion that Rhode Island Energy could do that, so that, in fairness to, after speaking with all the parties, including town administrator, we thought, in the effort of transparency and working together, we thought it would be best to bring it before you before we took any steps.
So we'll come back to this at a future date?
Okay.
As soon as we can, because we know you're on a schedule.
Yeah, and, and I and we definitely appreciate that. So with that said, is it, you speaking with George, or are we?
I have to George, hopefully have something for the next meeting to at least send to the Planning Board.
Yeah, so the process is we have to send something to the Planning Board, they have a set of questions that they have to respond to within 45 days of us sending it to them. They can take less time, but that's up to them. With their schedule for recommendations back to us, we have to have a public hearing and then make a decision.
We did explain this to George when we met, that this was going to be a little bit of a time issue, that it wasn't going to be immediate, that there was going to be some time involved.
But I think that we, we met, I think, assuming that we kind of follow that general schedule that they, they want to start in the fall, so I think we could probably get this done, if, if there's.
Fall.
We've got plenty to talk about.
Well, I don't, I don't want to talk to Jacques.
They still might have to get some other positions for the Planning Board.
There's still EFSP, an application we have to file and so forth, so it's a lot of details we have to do, but again, absolutely respect your positions, and again, just want to follow the process, full disclosure, work with the town, and again, hopefully it all works out, but again, definitely respect the process, and just, I'm available to answer any questions, whether this project or anything else that comes up through the, the town administrator. So again, just thank you for your time, and I guess we'll have, you'll talk to George, and we'll just proceed from there and hope it all works out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Afonso.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, Director Rogers, we have a couple of things for you next. I think folks have looked at these, I think they're pretty pro forma myself, so if we have any, does anybody have questions for Director Rogers?
Only question I have is on the list of materials, number seven, daily landfill cover. Fourth to last page.
This is on 8B or 8C?
Uh, 8B.
So just for folks, we're, we're taking 8B and 8C kind of together. 8B is request, the Director requests approval to extend the FY24 bid awards through FY25 as allowed by bid specs for HTPE pipe, catch basin frames, gates, grates, septic tank pumping and onsite wastewater treatments, inspections, systems inspections, and then C is discussion and possible vote to approve funds through advertised bids for paving, road materials, crack ceiling, and line painting. So go ahead, I'm sorry, your question?
Yeah, no, I just had a question, because number seven on that list is daily landfill cover, and I don't believe we're buying any more of that.
What page is that, David?
It's at the very end, like three pages into the.
Legal notice.
Yeah, but is, if I may ask, is that for the renewals, or is that for new?
Invitation to bid, fourth to last page.
Yes, but is that due April 2022?
Yeah, so he's going off the existing contract.
So this was standard from 24, the date's April 20, April 26, 22.
That is simply shown because it follows the train from 2022 to 2023, and renewals to 2024, you know.
Right, so we're just, you want to exercise our option to renew?
Yes.
Without going out for a new bid?
Yes, so we showed the original bid, that's why that's there.
Perfect.
So anything that's already.
We're not buying more cover, believe it, it's covered.
I think it's covered.
We hope.
This is just my own personal, now, how many town septic tanks are pumped?
Well, if we need to, we do, it also counts the holding tank at Grinnell's, Fogland, yeah, Senior Center, so.
Bogomash Park?
Bogomash Park, yes.
Grinnell's, Fogland.
Town Farm.
Or, count, Fogland.
Fogland, yep.
So six.
Two fivers.
Town Hall.
Town Hall, yes, thank you.
Libraries?
Libraries.
Yes.
Library, yes.
The one down at the.
Yes.
Southern.
Yeah, and I would think the main, the two is.
The where?
The main library.
That would be in the budget.
So approximately eight or nine.
Union.
Union.
Any other questions?
I'm just curious. There's a few.
Hearing none, do I have a motion on item 8C?
So moved.
Move approval of item 8C to extend the FY24 bid awards through FY25. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Wait a minute, 8B.
I'm sorry, I thought I said 8, okay, this is 8B?
Yes.
Yeah, request approval to extend FY24 bid awards through FY25. I might have said the wrong letter.
I just want to make sure.
I know what you meant.
Yeah, that's what I was going with.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And then Chris, or Rick, anything, we have the discussion of possible vote to approve funds to advertise bids for paving, road materials, crack ceiling, and line painting at 8C. Any questions for Director Rogers?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the funds to go out to bid for the items listed by the Director.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, so coming up, we have a couple of items that are to advertise proposed zoning amendments. Some of these, the, one is, and I'll get to all these, but one is recreational cannabis, another is not a zoning amendment, but it's a fund for the snow removal, restricted appropriation account for the snow removal, and then moving some of our, changing the $200,000 for the casino gaming, then we have our unified budget ordinance, and then we have some zoning ordinances that come out of the work of the zoning review committee and the Planning Board. So let's do D, discussion and possible vote to approve funding to advertise proposed amendments. To Town Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning regarding permissible zones for retail shops, testing, cultivation, and manufacture of recreational cannabis. We have a Planning Board recommendation, and I'm just going to pull that up so folks, so I can just give a sense to the public. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but this is regarding any type of cannabis establishment, so growing, manufacturing, retail sales. Mike, am I missing anything?
Testing.
Testing, okay. And to remind folks that.
Or a compassion center.
Or a compassion center. So there was a vote at the last election, and Tiverton voters approved us having such establishments in town, but we have to decide where. So the Planning Board recommendation, they talk about striking the requirement that cannabis retailers be located 2,000 feet from other cannabis retailers in adjoining communities. Right now, we have one that fits that description right over the line in Massachusetts off Stafford Road.
Two.
Two?
There's one on, one on Main Road as well.
That's right, I forgot about that one, even though I walked past it. Yeah, so there is one on Main Road right over the State Line in Fall River. They're suggesting we don't restrict that, the rationale being that it would limit locations within Tiverton where such retailers can be located and potentially negatively impact the town of Tiverton by eliminating, eliminating areas where they could be appropriately located. And then they voted to recommend to consider regulating at least where permitted, the cannabis retailer or marijuana retailer use separately from the cannabis or marijuana cultivator testing laboratory and compassion center uses. Then voted that all of the proposed cannabis uses be allowed by special use, and then voted that the proposed ordinance is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the goals and policy statement, and they list sections of it. And then a motion that they recommend to the Town Council that the proposed ordinance demonstrates the recognition of each of the applicable purpose of zoning as presented in the general laws, these are the areas that they have to give us feedback on. And then finally, they advise the Town Council that the zoning update committee is considering changes to the location of the highways, commercial zone, which if adopted, may warrant revisiting where these use established marijuana establishments may be located, and this was true particularly as related to the retailer use. Do I have, so again, this is to put this out for advertising, only for a public hearing? Do I have discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we move this forward for advertising, for a public hearing, and take the recommendations and include the recommendations of the Planning Board in what is advertised, meaning strike the $2,000, the $2,000, $2,000 foot restriction from the ordinance. Can we do that now, or do we have to?
I would wait till after the public hearing.
Okay, then in that case, I'd make a motion that we advertise for the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
The council's still going to have to make a, excuse me, the council's still going to have to make a decision whether it's going to be by right or a special use permit, so we're going to advertise it as an either or. I think the Planning Board would make a recommendation that to keep it as a special use permit, but I think that could change after a public hearing, so.
Right now, currently, we have a hold on any special use permits.
Except in this, the ordinance does specify the criteria that's been drafted, so.
Okay, okay.
I have one follow-up question as relates to that. I remember voting in favor of having, you know, cannabis retailers and manufacturers or whatever, but the compassion center is one that I don't recall being on the ballot.
Yeah, it was not, but compassion center was not permitted in any zone, but we're looking at the zoning code and updating it, it didn't really make sense to not include compassion center when you allow those other uses, so, and that's.
And we can always strike that.
You can, that can always be striking, so.
That'll be my, my push.
So, moving on to item AE, discussion and possible vote to approve funding to advertise proposed amendments to the Town Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 291, Restricted Appropriation Account, adding new restricted account for snow removal. We had talked about this during the budget process, recognizing that like some of the other restricted accounts we have for public works, items, and elections, and reevaluation, these are types of processes that can fluctuate significantly from year to year, and in terms of reevaluation, it's more costly when we do a full evaluation, and then plus we do those every third year. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion that we advertise this ordinance as well.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Right, we're sending this out for advertising?
Yes, this is for advertising, yep. No further discussion, all those in favor? Okay, now we're going to discuss, item F, discussion and possible vote to approve funding to advertise proposed amendments to the Town Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-107, Casino Gaming Revenue under 2-107B, recording $200,000 to the restricted paving account instead of the unassigned general fund. In the current ordinance, we had designed that the $200,000 that we get, which is a flat amount, through sports betting, was to go to the unassigned general fund as a way of trying to address the ongoing needs of paving and try to get to that $600 million mark, I think Rick has out there, which we'll never get to. The thought was if we take this money and put it in, it's going to help grow that account, knowing that it doesn't mean that we can't fund, we, we don't have to put funds into that on a regular basis, but this is trying, a way of trying to get ahead. This is only to look at advertising for a public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, moving on to the discussion and possible vote on the FY25 preliminary unified budget ordinance and set a public hearing date. You have the proposed unified budget ordinance in front of us. This is simply to put this out before the public and have that public hearing. It encompasses everything that we have come to. hearing. It encompasses everything that we have, um, come to agreement on thus far. Um, we, including the resolutions and the levy assess, uh, estimates. Um, do we have any explanation on it?
This did change from the last meeting that we had because the town administrator is about to explain, there were some updates to federal...
State.
State aid from education, um, which increased Tiverton's share, as well as other errors that we caught in the mathematical calculation, so, but he can better explain the math.
So, um, I did go back and look at Wright's, um, website, there's an update on 4/14. There's a, about a $20,000 increase in state aid to local education for Tiverton, so I made the appropriate adjustment. Um, and then there were, as Mike said, a couple of little math errors that, uh, we did correct. Other than that, I think we're good to go.
I will note, since we're talking about education, um, I don't know if there's a Senate version, but Representative Jay Edwards did put in a bill that would, if passed, would give us an additional $600,000 in education aid, and also adds money to Burrowville and...
Middletown.
Middletown.
This also sets the due dates for the taxes and the interest rate for late taxes. Um, and, um, the other thing you need to decide is the date of that public hearing. You have to have it at least before June 30th.
So let's, we'll do that in two separate motions. We'll first approve this, and then we can deal with the public hearing date, so you can give us some ideas.
Uh, no, it's in a motion that we approve the ordinance and send it out. Advertising.
Motion to approve the ordinance for advertising. Do I have a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, I was just reading the rest of it, but it says, set a public hearing date, so we have to do that separately?
Yeah, we're gonna...
Okay, that's fine.
Motion's been made in second to advertise this, um, proposed, um, preliminary unified budget.
One bit of discussion before we do that. So the bills that you referenced, um, I don't know if it's 8265 or 8266, but that was one of the ones that, uh, I had mentioned earlier in this meeting. Um, and, uh, the state reps will be looking for, um, a resolution in support of that bill.
Can we, um...
Can I just ask, is that for this, this budget year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so the, uh...
The FY25.
The financial reporting bill from Representative Edwards, which gives us, which would require, um, school committee end quasi, as if we do it by ordinance, to give us financial reports on a monthly basis, and we can get the details on that later. And then the added funds is, so that first one was 8265, second one that we're just talking about now, the $600,000, is 8266. So perhaps we can have some resolutions on those, Michael. Coming back to us next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one that we talked about earlier, yeah.
Yeah.
The two that, and I sent these to you earlier today, I texted them to you earlier today.
And that, that $600,000, along with the other dollars for the other municipalities, is gonna be taken out of the charter schools allocation in the budget. So it's not like it's coming from another municipality, this is coming from the charter schools.
Correct. So we have a motion on the unified budget ordinance made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, do we have, what would our dates look like, Madam Clerk?
It's time for the little calendar.
It needs a 14-day advertisement requirement for the unified budget public hearing. So if we advertise, um, next week's paper, um, first paper out would be the 23rd, 14 days after that, uh, would give you a public hearing on June 10th, which is a regular council meeting.
Do we have enough time in there to actually have the school committee come meet with us?
We could, I do...
The public has been clamoring for that.
Right, I do have, that was something I was gonna add to the agenda anyway, 'cause, um, Council President did send me some dates, she's available for that piece, May 20th or May 21st, she's available. I don't know about anyone else, but...
That's next week?
I know.
Oh, okay.
That's her meeting with the schools?
That's when she gave me that she's available, if we decide to set a meeting, she's available. Those dates, she may be available other dates, but that's what she gave me for next week.
All right, so, for the budget hearing, um, Madam Clerk, you said anytime after June 10th, but before the 30th?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's our, so June 10th is a regular meeting, it's kinda hard to do a public hearing in a regular meeting night, I would think, but do we wanna look at June 17th?
My preference would be no, but that's specifically because my oldest gets her pre-K graduation, so.
No.
That's PM, they're doing it.
So, yeah, hang on, there's other advertisement requirements afterwards.
So, once the final budget's adopted, the town administrator's gonna advertise it under state law for a period, for a period of time, is it 10 days?
10 days, 10 business or just 10 calendar?
10 calendar days.
Okay, so then we should not go past the 20th?
June 20th.
Of June. How about the 18th of June?
Sure.
Does that work for everybody else?
Juneteenth Eve.
I'll make it work.
I know, it's the eve.
The eve.
Yes.
All right, um, do I have a motion to set the public hearing date for the unified budget hearing for June 18th?
So moved.
At 7:00 PM, at, if, so we should pick all, let's do this date, and then we'll pick some alternate dates, hang on. Um, I have a motion in a second on the 18th. All those in favor? Okay, so, let's do at least one alternate, because if we can't get the appropriate space on the 18th...
We going to the high school, is that the goal?
That's generally where we go, yeah.
You can't go beyond the 20th.
Right, so we could look the week before, we could look at the 11th, 12th, 13th? Any druthers?
You are allowed to pass the budget after that public hearing.
Right, we don't have to, but we have to pass the budget before the...
30th.
No, he has to advertise after we pass it.
Right, so at least seven days before, right, so.
10 days.
10 days.
So we have to have it passed by the 20th. So I'm actually thinking if we do, what if we do the 11th as the initial date and 18th as a backup? Are we okay with that?
I like it.
So you're gonna have a meeting on the 10th, and then one on the 11th?
Correct.
It'll be fast.
Public hearing on the 11th.
There's nothing controversial in this budget.
Well... We have a regular meeting the 24th, but we're gonna have to have the budget approved before then, so Chris has time to advertise.
Can I just ask, what if we have a petition of budget?
That comes after.
It's after, it comes after.
After, after...
After you guys approve the final budget, this has been...
It comes after that, okay.
Um... So 11th or 12th? Madam Clerk suggested that the 11th could, is probably a school committee night?
Okay, I just wanna make a comment, so, Chris and I was just speaking, he's trying to try to get the state to approve the language in this ordinance for publication, probably this week, if they sign off on it. But that assumes that there are no changes to this budget after the public hearing.
Right.
So that's the issue. So if the budget changes at the public hearing, or anytime after the public hearing, he has to re-advertise, um, to comply with state law. The advertising requirement we're talking about now is clearly by our, just up by our charter, but he's gonna get the Department of Revenue to sign off on the actual tax rate. So that's why I'm just, so, if there are no changes that we're all set, huh?
We really shouldn't, we should wait until the public hearing then.
Say that again.
And so we should wait until the public hearing then for advertising it, or we're going to the state to...
This has to be advertised before the public hearing.
Oh, it does. Well, no, I understand that, but I mean for, to get the approval from...
Once, that's done, and if there's no changes from the public hearing...
So, but if we change our dollar at the public hearing, then you have to just go and re-advertise.
But, but, yeah, but he is going to just, 'cause there's, the tricky part of this ordinance is we're, we're revaluation year, so we've gotta, we've gotta compare a rate based upon an old valuation, so they need to sign off on that as well, so.
So this is, that's more about them being okay with all the...
The public notice for their requirements, correct.
So I'm gonna try to get them to preliminary approve the, what the format is now, and then if there are changes, we can, you know, insert those changes and hopefully get a quick turnaround.
Right, so if you get it done early, and there are changes, the likelihood is that they could just...
They'll be familiar with that process, right?
Right.
I'm actually gonna submit it to them tomorrow, see if I can get...
So, um, may I suggest the 12th as the first date and the 18th is the second date? 12th is a Wednesday, 18th is a Tuesday.
Wait, I thought we were trying to do the 11th.
Well, Madam Clerk, that's likely a school committee night, so if they wanted to be there, it's gonna be hard for them.
I mean...
When graduation is there?
Yeah, I don't know either.
It's usually a Friday.
Well, we can find out.
It's the 7th or the 14th.
June 7th? Yeah, you would know. So, are we okay with 12th and the 18th, 7:00 PM?
Sure.
Hearing, no disagreements, we'll go with those two dates. Because the other thing is, if we don't have a final decision on the 12th, then we need to come back together for a final decision, that gives us that 18th for us to meet, 'cause we can't wait until our next regular meeting.
So I should go for the 12th first?
Yeah, do the 12th first, 18th is a backup, and if we go to the 18th, then we're gonna have to work hard.
Should we advertise the 5th, the Saturday 15th, just in case?
For us, or for...
For us, yeah.
Advertise what?
I mean...
Like, oh, just, like, block, like, hold it for a meeting right now, like, for...
That could just be posted, so you could have a meeting anytime after the public hearing is over, that's just a 48 hours notice.
Yeah, that's what I mean, 'cause if we do it at the 12th, then you don't have enough time to...
Right, she won't have enough time to post it.
But that, you said advertise, but you meant post.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine.
Not that I wanna meet on a Saturday, but...
Right, if folks, if folks wanna do that...
It would be fast.
Rather than wait till the 11th hour or the 18th.
Any disagreement over posting a meeting for the 15th of September as a placeholder?
September 11th.
I'm sorry, it's my birthday, that's why I said... 15th of June.
Guys, this has gone off the rails pretty quickly here.
June 12th, is that what we're saying?
Public hearing, June 12th.
Right.
Ooh, it's 15th, 16th.
But they wanna schedule a potential meeting of this, the council for June 15th.
At 9:00 AM.
Changes to the budget as a result of the public hearing that was on the 12th.
Correct.
Yes, that's what I was going for.
Is it Saturday?
Yes, 9:00 AM. Any, anybody have any concerns about any of those dates?
Just realize Father's Day, Father's Day's the next day, but...
All right, so, you good with that?
Yes, so long as you make the motion.
Motion that we advertise for a public hearing for the unified budget on the 12th, provided that the clerk can find a location. If she can't, then the next date would be the 18th of June, assuming we have a location. And also to post for a special town council meeting, both of those first times are at 7:00 PM, special town council meeting at 9:00 AM on the morning of Saturday, June 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor? All right, let me just put these down in my notes. 12, 6:18, and then 6:15, yes.
You're gonna go back and get these, a drug meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll do that later.
Go, but you go through these, and then we'll go back to the...
Yeah, we'll come back. Yeah, no, that's fine. Uh, discussion of possible vote to schedule public hearing and to advertise public hearing for amendment to appendix A zoning ordinance article 16. This amendment will extend the sunset provision on the mandate to amend the district use table in relation to uses that require a special use permit and to draft specific and objective criteria for uses that require a special use permit. If you remember, the only way we can have special use permits if, is if there are specific criteria similar to what you saw in the cannabis, um, ordinance proposal. Uh, so this, we had ended that on, um, as of June 30th, so this is proposing that we extend it because the zoning review committee, planning board, et cetera, it's a hell of a task to undertake. They're making good inroads, but they still have a lot to do.
I have, so this needs to be passed before June 30th, so we have to have time for a public hearing on this, before June 30th, so it's a three-week advertisement.
So, all makes sense to me, the only question I would have is, is November 30th of this year, give them enough time?
That's what they requested.
That's what they, yeah.
Okay.
You can't go too far out, because then it looks like we're just stalling, so...
All right, well then, in that case, I'll make a motion that we advertise, uh, for the appendix A zoning ordinance article 16.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor? You would need us to say a date, um, and what about the June 10th meeting? Is that enough time? June, June 24th meeting, whatever that, is it the 24th?
June 24th?
Yeah.
And that is also the other two that, the cannabis and...
Yes.
The other two, um...
I mean...
Related to the budget.
24th is related to the budget?
The, um...
Restricted.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Restricted count and the, um, 2-107.
Honestly, I think it makes sense to do all these zoning things together.
Stack 'em all up.
And, yeah, it might be a long night. I don't think the two related to the budget are gonna take that much airtime.
I, I agree, Mike, I, I think that we can put them together.
So...
Yeah, I think we should do all the zoning ones.
Yeah, those need to be passed before the fiscal year as well.
And we need to do all the zoning ones together, I think.
So, what if, I'll do this, I'm gonna take a motion on a date after we go through the rest of these, and we'll just do one date, right?
Love it.
Do you need a motion on a date? No?
No.
No, okay, okay, never mind. So, we're looking at June 24th.
Perfect.
All right, um, discussion of possible vote to schedule public hearing, to advertise public hearing for amendments to appendix A zoning ordinance articles 3, 4, 7, and 9, and to adopt a new zoning map. These amendments generally adopt a new R-120 zoning district, which will replace the R-80 zone district, and expand the portions of the R-40 and R-60 zone districts. And you do have, had in front of you new maps. Um, I assume these are available on the website, too?
Not yet.
Not yet, they will be. So the top one is the existing, the bottom one is the proposed, see all the purples?
I don't believe these have to be adapted by June 30th.
The maps don't?
I do not believe that.
Okay.
It's still not that it's expiring, so...
I mean, just, they're all going, it's, we're talking about it all the same night, so, and if we're gonna have, I'm sure Stu and, uh, Ms. Hilton will be here, so let's make good use of their time.
Yeah, and if anybody has specific questions on any of these items, Stu and Trish are here, they said they'd be here, if you have any specific items, trying to avoid getting into too much detail tonight, but go ahead.
So, um, I would like to make a motion that we advertise for the 24th, appendix A zoning ordinance articles 3, 4, 7, 9, to adopt the new zoning map.
Got a motion, second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Jay, discussion of possible vote, I'm not calling you, I'm just saying, Jed.
Okay.
Discussion of possible vote to schedule public hearing and to advertise public hearing for amendments to appendix A zoning ordinance articles 2 and 5, and create article 26. Get me on these Roman numerals. Um, these amendments will adopt conservation development projects, zoning, and planning tool that requires subdivisions and land development projects of four or more units or lots to implement certain design criteria necessary to preserve the town's diminishing natural resources, in particular water. Um, again, this is just to advertise, are you gonna use that same date?
Mr. Chair, uh, same date, and I will make a motion that we advertise for a public hearing for amendments to appendix A zoning ordinance articles 2, 5, and 26.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and item K, discussion of possible vote to schedule public hearing, to advertise public hearings for amendments to appendix A zoning ordinance articles 2 and 4. These These amendments will add to the list of specifically prohibited uses and will define those uses. Again, this is for advertisement for public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The other Edwards? Yes. Any discussion?
Just one. I guess nuclear power plants are a no-go, so if we pass this.
So just to say that the planning board has spent hours and hours on all of these changes and.
Not yet, we haven't, discussion.
I just wanted to say they spent a lot of time on this, and there was a lot of discussion trying to close up all the loopholes and trying to make things well-defined and just trying to preserve our town and to make the growth a little better planned. And so I do believe that if we put these all in one date, they will be able to summarize all the vast hours that they spent doing this.
And also the zoning review committee.
The zoning review committee.
And a lot of these, a lot of these, like, I know we're talking about multiple different ordinances or amendments to the zoning ordinance, but a lot of it goes hand in hand, and it ties into the comp plan and all that other stuff, so.
Yes. One quick question. So in our current zoning, we have a statement to the effect of if it's not identified in the zoning ordinances, then it's not a permitted use.
That went away.
So.
I think the reason why they're doing this is because they want change.
I understand. There's a particular use that's not in that list that we've been waiting on legislation for.
Short-term rentals.
Yes. So, short-term rentals.
Yeah, what is, anybody know what's going on with that?
No, well, it's off top. I, I just want to make sure it's not, I will be proposing that that get put in that list.
So remember that the, that the zoning code now has a provision that a use not listed, the zoning officer has the ability to kind of use his skills, or his or her skills, to figure out whether or not something that's proposed that's not in the list could be, could fit into a zone or is close to something that is listed, unless it's specifically prohibited. And I'm, I'm assuming, though I didn't go to any of the meetings, but I did talk to Ted, that some of these things are, that's why they're listed as they are.
Subjective, yeah.
So, so you take that discretion away.
All right.
Some of them are.
All right, we have a motion.
Just one other point. We, we had said June twenty-fourth. Does that work with the planning board? Okay, that, that's.
Thank you.
That's important.
We should probably make sure Ashley is available to the planners.
Yeah. But we don't have any choices, though.
Yeah, we don't.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, our last item on our regular agenda, the agreement between the Town of Tiverton, Rhode Island and United Steelworkers for July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. Note that this is for our DPW employees only, correct? Yes, DPW employees. Note that the employees decided to move unions and got agreement. So they're moving from the Teamsters Union to the United Steelworkers Union. I'll let Chris and or, well, I guess Chris, do a high, high-level summary for the public of what we, we would be agreeing to in this, and this has already been advertised, put on the website in terms of fiscal impact.
I would defer until we get to, after executive, so that it can be explained with Labor Council.
Okay.
All right, and then we'll bring it back in open session after executive session.
So we'll hold this item for after our executive session. So I will entertain a motion.
Before you do that, I think we want to mind the agenda so you can have a discussion about setting a date with the.
Oh, thank you, yes, so. Motion to amend the agenda to set a date, proposed date to meet with the school committee?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so I did note, as I said, the council president said she's available the twentieth and twenty-first. I have no idea when the school committee's available, so we'll need, can you reach out or? I, I mean, I can send something to Jerry, I know. Oh, I also want to note.
Yes.
On a positive note, our school committee president was nominated by Governor McKee to fill the long open vacancy as the director of the Department of Public Health. So I want to congratulate Dr. Larkin on that nomination. I believe his advice and consent will either be sometime later this week, although it's not posted yet.
Thursday.
Early next week. Was it posted?
I believe it's, yeah, I heard it was Thursday.
Well, that's, that's what I understand, but it wasn't posted as of one thirty today. But in any regards, he will likely be, unless something goes awry, which I doubt, he'll likely be through the full Senate by sometime in the next two weeks at the latest. So congratulations to Dr. Larkin on that nomination.
There'll be an appointment open.
Well, not necessarily. Depends what, it doesn't disqualify him from staying on the school committee. It's up to he and his boss. It doesn't disqualify him from being on the school committee. So. That said, again, the twenty-first or the twenty-second, do those work for folks?
Just give a couple of dates just to see.
I already have something on the twentieth for the council.
I don't.
No? But I, it might have been this that we talked about.
I think, I mean, either one, twentieth or the twenty-first, my preference would be the Monday night.
I can do, I can do either.
I'm just texting Jerry.
Did you say Wednesday, the twenty-second?
No, twenty.
Twentieth or twenty-first?
Hang on, hang on, please.
I got a meeting May twentieth.
She said the twentieth or the twenty-first?
She said what?
The twentieth or the twenty-first?
Okay.
I can't do the twentieth.
Okay.
Along those lines, Mr. Administrator, have we received the information that was requested?
Not as of yet. We're, we have received the information very shortly that they did. I will say the solicitor and legal counsel for the school committee have been discussing having a meeting with the school administration, I believe, this Thursday, between the treasurer, myself, superintendent, the finance manager, both attorneys, and everyone who's welcome to attend.
Well, hold on. I don't mean to be stepping on your toes, but we, this meeting was designed to try to smooth some waters and get some information from, so we, it's my preference, but you can certainly, I didn't want to, I didn't want to fight, not that I didn't want to fight, it was kind of agreed amongst the attorneys that we would keep, just at the, at the principal level and we would come back.
Sorry. I didn't know that.
Listen, no, 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 no worries at all. I mean, perhaps we shouldn't bother scheduling a meeting with the school committee then.
No, this is not, this is not.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we, we've been talking about it.
This is more about information gathering than making decisions. We don't have the authority to make decisions. I was trying to explain the lack of documentation that we've got.
Yeah.
So is everybody else available on the twenty-first?
Yes.
Okay, how about as an alternate, well, we have a meeting on the twenty-eighth, so we could possibly have them come to our meeting if we want, depending on everything, what else we have on that agenda. Or pick another date between now and June twelfth. I'd like to give them at least two options.
How about June third?
That's another, yeah, that's another council meeting.
No, June third is not a council meeting. Does anybody have any disagreements with June third as a possible date?
What's the day?
The Monday.
It's an off Monday.
Yo, thank you.
Is that closed zone? Yeah, but we.
I can do any of those.
We can't go into the next week. All right, so June twenty-first or, I'm sorry, May twenty-first or June third. I sent those dates to Jerry. I sent them the twentieth, but we can't do the twentieth, so. So you don't need a motion on that, right?
No.
Yep, all right, so.
Will you go back and go ahead if those dates are okay with the school committee?
Yes, provided he answers me. He will, but he doesn't, oh, he might be with a patient, I don't know.
That's not so long.
I will entertain in a moment a motion to go into executive session for the following items. A, RIGL forty-two forty-six five A two, tax appeal litigation regarding Twin River LLC versus David Robert, NM twenty twenty-two dash oh one three eight, and twenty twenty-two dash two four three six, discussion and vote on potential compromise and settlement. B, Town Administrator, RIGL forty-two forty-six dash five A two, collective bargaining, discussion and possible vote on Teamsters Local two fifty-one contract negotiations. C, Town Administrator, RIGL forty-two forty-six five A two, collective bargaining update on IBPO number four oh six negotiations. D, Town Administrator, RIGL forty-two forty-six A five, forty-two forty-six five A two, collective bargaining, discussion and possible vote on IA double F, Local seventeen oh three, contract negotiations. E, Town Administrator, RIGL forty-two forty-six five four, any investigation proceeding regarding allegations of misconduct, either civil or criminal, Fire Department. F, Town Solicitor, RIGL forty-two forty-six five A two, quarterly status update on and all pending litigation against the Town of Tiverton. And finally, G, Town Solicitor, RIGL forty-two forty-six five A five, update on acquisition of privately owned properties to be donated to the Town of Tiverton. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second motion's made and seconded to go into executive session under those items.
Yes.
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 Yes, we will take as long a break as we need.